We are ready to move on to the pledge of allegiance to the president. We're doing a little basic thing for everyone of us who are reading.
The loose thread.
Well, good evening. Thank you for everybody showing up on this beautiful Tuesday night. We are going to do a call.
Mayor Beria.
President.
Councilmember Soria.
President.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Nate. Here. The record's going to show that Mayor Protem Flores is absent. With what?
Notice.
With notice. Is Ali.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda, the motion to approve.
I haven't done this in quite a while, so it's going to take me a little while. Yeah. So. Approval by.
Soria.
Soria.
And then Rosanna.
Second by Rosanna. Okay. Call him favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you. We're going to move on to our proclamation. We have three tonight, so we're going to start off with the Orange Blossom Festival event and Councilman Soria is going to read that one.
Whereas the Orange Blossom is an annual celebration that honors the citrus Indian industry in our community and one of the city of Lindsay's longest-running traditions. Whereas in the year 2025, the city of Lindsay will mark its 93rd anniversary of this special celebration. And whereas the city of Lindsay recognizes the hard work and dedication of the community leaders that enable the Orange Blossom Festival to celebrate the city and its history. And now therefore be resolved that Mayor Misty of the city of Lindsay, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 5th, 2025 through Sunday, April 13th, 2025, the 93rd Annual Lindsay Orange Blossom Festival. Congratulations to everyone.
Anyone? Thank you. You have a solid here. Now, we're going to move on to the Orange Blossom Festival Queen Interfere and the Orange Blossom Honored Couple, and that's going to be read by Councilwoman Lee. Whereas the Orange Blossom Festival affords the citizens of Lindsay a special opportunity to recognize and honor the queen, her court, and the honored couple chosen to preside over this joyous celebration of community. And whereas academic achievement, civic and community service, and self-determination are paramount among the values considered in the selection of the royal party and the special honoring. And now therefore be resolved, Mayor Misty Villarreal, along with the members of the city council, invite all of you all to join us in honoring the 93rd Annual Lindsay Orange Blossom Festival Queen Berenice Angel, the Queen's Court Abby Chavez, Adriana Lemos, Cecilia Angel Flores, Daisy Andrade Lemos, and the Orange Blossom Honored Couple Jeff and Linda Muncher. In witness whereof, she hereby sets her hand and causes seal of city of Lindsay to be affixed this 8th day of April 2025. Thank you so much.
You can send right there. You can send right there. Oh, right there. Perfect. There you go. I don't know. Can you Photoshop our Google? Congratulations. At this point, do you want them to?
Oh, they have a gift for you as well.
I'm still inspired by the speech they gave on Saturday.
Are you still excited to? It was it was French, Italian, Spanish, English.
Also, you know four.
Well, I have friends in Spanish and English, and I'm like interviewed in Italian, and like, because that was just a translation that I decided to speak. Yeah, that was bragging about. Yeah, that's fair. And then that word from the sports, I just to give a message of what it felt like to kind of come to this country and not speak the language in the community where I felt a little out of place essentially. Yeah, but thank you all for having us here. I'm honored to be this year's Orange Blossom Queen, and my name is Berenice Angel, so I'll tell you a little bit about my story. But yeah, I graduated from Lindsay High School back in 2020, and then I attended UC Berkeley where I graduated with my degree in geology and the honors program. And I'm now a geologist working out in East Shaw at a leading geojournal well project. So I'm grateful to be here. And we've had a lot of fun this week so far. It's only Tuesday, but we've done so much, starting off at like seven thirty in the morning and ending like six, seven. Yeah, so our days are definitely full, but lots of joy, lots of happiness going on. One of my favorite things probably has to be seeing all the different businesses that we have, aren't we? And they're kind of like in the shadows. Sesque Street was probably one of my favorites so far, and it's nice to see that they kind of support surrounding fields here in the Orange Grove. So that was always nice. But I'm going to have the girl share a little bit about themselves as well, kind of kind of ring. But thank you all for having us. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abby Chavez. I'm a senior at Lindsay High School and one of this year's OBF attendants. A little bit about me is that I am part of the Academy of Health Science Program. So I've been studying to pretty much a pre-med track in high school. And I've been part of POSA, ASB, as well as California Scholarship Federation and Spanish Honors. Some sports I've done, I've done cheerleading. I've done that for about three years now. Every year we do host miniature camp and we invite all of the younger generations in the community to come out and to have an experience to be a cheerleader and to perform at a football game. We we also have other like little teams that help with that as well. My parents are here today. I'm the daughter of Stephanie and Esteban Chavez, who some of you may know. And this week I've I've had so much fun. It's amazing to see other people in my community being celebrated and our queen Berenice, of course. And I'm just so glad to be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jana Lemos, and I'm also a senior here at LHS at the varsity attendance. I've been various clubs off throughout my four years, like Walkouts, Spanish Honors, CSF, ASB, where I'm also the commissioner of marketing, and FFA, where I should please, for Tulare and Park Road Fair. I'm also a three-sport varsity athlete. I do cross country, soccer, and track and field, and in total I hold three MVPs and held five leadership captain goals. After high school, I plan to be running and also get a degree in either business or animal science. My favorite part about this Orange Blossom week so far has been seeing all the little kids, because that was once.
What university?
Oh. Um, either model A or B. Oh, I didn't mention. I'm planning to attend UC Berkeley and study human biology.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lucy Navarro, and I'm also a senior like the rest of my attendance. I would like to say just a thank you to Bertha and Melissa for all the work that they're doing, and then also my core, just really quoting me out very loud and loud. So if you're on my boarders in high school, I have been involved in FBO, which is basically my research organization. And I am currently serving as the vice president of projects on that region. And I have been able to help out my community, especially the Christmas tree line ceremony, or all the Christmas events, the parade as well. So it's just really bonding really close to my community and every aspect. I'm also an ASB, and I do serve as treasurer, so I'm going to just oversee all our finances and just kind of ensure that we're closer kind of helping state. And I mean, it's all just planning our rallies and any events, so really nice to kind of mention something about my environment that way. I do plan to attend UC LA to major in economics at the school. And kind of a highlight of my week so far, I think, that's just to say, just kind of seeing the new generation of the students and all the learning environments. So just seeing kind of how they want to do, and see all the new teachers, it's really nice.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Zoe Ando. I'm also a senior at Lindsay High School. There are a number of things that keep me busy outside of school hours. Some of the clubs that I'm in are HUSA, where I get to do a lot of science and research stuff. I actually got the chance to travel to Washington to see for a leadership conference last year in September. So that was really fun, because I got to meet people from all over the country. I'm also involved in interact or get to do a lot of community events. Some of my favorite events today annually are the Thanksgiving Turkey Drive or the free pancake breakfast, or just helping the community when, you know, it's going through tough times. For example, when Lindsay went through flooding a few years back. So it felt really good not helping my community during that time. As for sports, I do track and field, and I'm also a varsity tennis, where I have had the honor to serve as a role model captain for my junior and senior years. After graduating from high school, I will be attending UC Berkeley, where I will where I plan to pursue neuroscience, major in neuroscience on track, and to want to become a doctor. Oh, and sorry, the highlight of my week so far has definitely been, well, today, I really enjoyed the orange thing that we did. It was great labor, but it was the best thing. I thought were really good. And also interacting with the little kids, just seeing their emotion and their excitement on their faces. It's something so beautiful to see. And yeah, thank you so much for having me here.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Muncher. This is my wife, Linda Muncher. We are not seniors at Lindsay High School. I was at Lindsay High School around Lindsay High School around fifty-four years ago. So we've been in the community quite a while. We're honored to have been selected to be on a couple this year. We're very blessed by that choice. We've been around a long time and involved in the community. We're involved in our church, Great Two Church. I'm also involved Lindsay scholarship scholars and Lindsay educational community learning. They mentioned we've got some long dates here. They give us all these activities. This was a real rough one for me because I had three additional things on that calendar on top of all the activities. I just just got here from announcing doing a scoreboard for the high school baseball game, so that's why I was a little late. I apologize. But we thank you for having us here, and and we thank the Orange Blossom City for choosing us to be on our couple this year.
All right. Well, that's pretty much it for all of us. But yeah, just thank you guys again for having us and for investing in the Orange Blossom overall. It's a really great tradition. I've been part of Lindsay for about fifteen years now. But it's always great to see how the community comes together on that thing. So we're really excited for the Saturday, and if you have a chance, come on to the carnival and the the parade as well. That'll be at 10 a.m. So yeah, we have a couple of gifts for you all, so we're just going to take a minute to give those to you.
Well, thank you, guys. We're proud to be all proud of you guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you for having me. So as they're making their way, before I read this proclamation, I just want to congratulate the basketball team, but also back in the day, if you guys didn't know, I coached Tina to your guys' coach, Her Valley Championship. So it's such an honor, and I'm just so proud of her and of you guys. So let me read this. It says, whereas the Lindsay High School Cardinals basketball team consists of supportive parents, staff, coaches, and players, all grounded on solid foundation of values, trust and commitment, and whereas through their perseverance, hard work, and dedication, the Cardinals scored victory as a central section Division VI championship, proving that the Cardinals' rule is always the fight to win by demonstrating resilience, teamwork, and the championship mindset that led them to the Division VI title. And whereas throughout the season, the team calculated bans with exceptional performances, including precise free throws, dynamic shots from the field, and determined shots from outside the arc, all in pursuit of the championship glory. And whereas the Cardinals' success ignited a deep sense of community pride, bringing together residents, alumni, and supporters from all walks of life who rallied behind the team, filling the stands with unwavering spirit and enthusiasm. And whereas the remarkable season united Lindsay like never before, fostering a renewed appreciation for teamwork, resilience, and hometown pride. Reminding everyone that need that can be achieved through dedication and a shared sense of purpose. And whereas the city of Lindsay and its residents commend all those who contributed to Lindsay High School Cardinals basketball team's success and outstanding season. Now and therefore be resolved that the city council of city Lindsay congratulates the members of the Lindsay High School Cardinals basketball team for their dedication, good sportsmanship, team spirit, and athletic pros, celebrating their outstanding achievement as a central VI dividend champions, champions, sorry. In witness whereof, I hereby set a hand and cause the seal of the city of Lindsay to be affixed this 4th day of February 2025. Is that what you guys mean championship? Yeah, I thought that was a long day. So congratulations.
So. All right. Melanie Navarro. Kate Sanchez. Sofia Navarro. Kevi S Y. Jessica Kirov. Melanie Nodan. Jackson Mendoza. India Sigmund. Angie Fernandez. Miana Hara. Madison Benny. Assistant Coach Mariah Castanum. Subdivision of Siri Monteano. Assistant Coach Sandra Venteria. Assistant Coach Larry Castro. And head coach Christina Castro. Congratulations. Ready, get it elevated.
One, two, one, two.
Hurry up. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public comment as they're making their way out of their reaches. The public is invited to comment on any subject under the jurisdiction of the Lindsay City Council. Please note that the speakers at which to comment on a regular item or a public hearing on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to speak on public comment for them or the item is requested by the mayor. Comment shall be limited to three minutes per person with thirty minutes for total comment periods, unless otherwise indicated by the mayor. The public may also choose to submit a comment before meeting via email. Public comments received via email will be distributed to the council file at the start of the meeting and incorporated into the official minutes. However, they will not be read aloud under state law. Matters presented under their public comment cannot be acted upon speaking at this time. At this time, we're taking. So right now, we're taking public comments. Do you have any public comments? Welcome.
Thank you. You hit the button on that.
My name is Kevin Reiden. I'm the president of the Lindsay Police Officer Association. I can't begin to tell you how unsettling it is to be standing here with this message, but the people of this city deserve it here. Our staffing level at the police department is critically low because our officers keep leaving to better pay jobs. We struggle to find qualified candidates to replace those, and there's no leaving sites. Those officers who go here are fed up. In the next few months, they too will likely leave to better pay jobs. There will be no licensed officers left patrol the streets or respond to calls. This should come as no shock to this council. The issues that brought us to this point have been more than two years in the making, and the decisions made by the previous council, which occurred to the current council members, put this ball in motion. One current council member has consistently raised concerns and proposed solutions to avoid the situation we now face, but no one listened to the message. You haven't invested in public safety. You shouldn't be surprised when this city stops being safe. Several California cities have tried that a few years ago. I encourage you to ask them how that worked out. There's a lot of great people in this community, and I'm sure you've noticed some of them here tonight. They're concerned citizens. They live here, work here, own businesses here, and vote. As members of this community, they expect Lindsay, a Lindsay police officer to show up when they call 911. They expect bad guys to be arrested and crimes be solved. They expect a safe city to live and work in. The decisions you make affect those people, their families, homes, businesses, livelihoods, and quality of life. These people and their families will be who suffer when there are no Lindsay police officers left answer their calls. Allowing our department to get to this point, to involve us, that public safety has not been a priority of the council, and priorities can be saved. We were repeatedly told there's no money. The city is broke. This city is on the verge of losing the police department. Yet funding continues for non-essential departments such as recreation, wellness center, and the pool. Is the city really that broke? Those services have value, but they are not essential to the public safety or the daily operation of this city. If you can't afford this police department, you certainly can't afford any of the alternatives. You were all elected to lead this city. Part of being leaders, having the courage to make tough decisions, even when the right decision is unpopular. If the city is as broke as we're being told, and you care about the safety of the citizen you represent, then it's time to make the decisions necessary to ensure that Lindsay police officers are here to answer the calls.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comments?
My name is Adam Murray. I'm the vice president of Lindsay Police Officer. I'm going to show you what our department looks like not too long ago, what it looks like today. Okay, the symbols on this display were represented right from the position of public safety employees. It shows where our staffing levels, which is sixteen months. The next one shows what our staffing level was six months ago. And then a final one shows currently what our current staffing levels. In case you didn't notice, we currently have half the police officers who we have six months ago. I want to point out symbols in red box. Those symbols represents officers. Those are the officers you see wearing uniforms and driving police cars. Those are officers responsible for protecting the citizens of Lindsay twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Those are the officers that respond when somebody calls 911, any type of assistance. Also want to point out there's no detective position represented on this. We don't have enough officers to fill the detective positions, so officers will be left to investigate any major crimes. They have to have that done. And addition to. This is what a critically close acting of the needs like. The council approved a recruit position during the March eleventh council. The numbers on this brochure are three estimates of the five-weekly take-home for that position. The top number represents the take-home pay of an officer recruit for any family to ensure. The middle number represents the take-home pay for an officer recruit who ensures their spouse. And the bottom one represents the take-home pay for officer recruit who ensures their family. Okay, a five percent increase to those numbers is approximate starting pay for step one lease house. Five percent. This is exactly the reason why our officers keep leaving, why we can't attract new ones. If we can hire a new officer, they don't start the next day, okay, and they respond to calls. If there are no issues, there are no hiring processes, the background process, approximately two and a half, three months, once they are hired. They're required to pass a sixteen week full training program before they can even respond to calls by themselves. Um, or even be counted as an officer. Keep in mind, there's always a possibility that somebody can fail a background investigation or fail at any point during the full training program. And once they do that, then we start the whole process over. I've been with this police department, uh, I've been a police officer here for fourteen years, this is the lowest stat I've ever had.
Thank you.
Evening, council. My name is Chris Dempsey. I'm the secretary and secretary of the Police Officer Association. The things our officers do or don't do directly affect the citizens. Our resources have diminished to the point where we struggle to cover the full list at the minimum staffing level. The calls for service don't stop or slow down just because we have less officers on the street. The few officers we have now are burdened with the workload once shared by twice as many officers. There's no relief in sight, and we don't know how long the few officers we have left will be willing to carry that burden. There's a shortage of police officers everywhere and departments all over the Central Valley are continuously hiring. Any of our officers could easily find another job elsewhere. The only thing keeping the officers we have left is that they like working in Lindsay and they enjoy serving the community. I'm certain the citizens of Lindsay have already felt the impact of our lack of staffing. But we are only at the beginning, things will get worse from here. Here's some things you should consider. The city parks, what will those look like without Lindsay police officers? The Olive Bowl Park project looks like it's gonna be awesome. But imagine what that will look like a few months after it opens if there are no Lindsay police officers. I'm sure everyone has noticed the homeless and mental health crisis as well as the gang problem in our community. These issues will be significantly worse without a Lindsay police department. Saturday night is another issue. Saturday night is a hugely popular event that is ran by the LPOA. Uh, and it will not happen without Lindsay police officers. Another issue is the Friday night market. Take all the extra traffic the market brings into the city every week. And all the issues that come along with it, is that something that can safely continue without Lindsay police officer? The same goes for the menudo cook-off, the rib cook-off, O B F, the car shows and all the events that the city hosts. And those events safely continue without the police department. We also have a new transit center coming to Lindsay in the future. You should consider the impact that will have without Lindsay police officers. Another issue is the schools. Ask the parents of children that attend our schools how they feel about the situation where. Ask the people employed by the school district how they feel about it. There are several other things we could list, but I think you understand the point. And I hope you understand how serious this issue is from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comments?
Good evening, uh, Josh Flowers. I've been about a month since I've been here. But, uh, yeah, today what I wanted to talk is try to bring a little bit of hope and optimism, but I know things are tough and hard right now. Um, you see your stock market right now and it's falling, people are losing 401Ks, our pensions are all being possibly affected by it. But what I want to tell you is that there's some good things coming from this in the macro part of the world. Because Wall Street got greedy over the last three years. And so what we're doing is we're seeing people retreat from that and they're moving the money to the treasuries. This is good for the city of Lindsay because it's gonna allow you to balance or rework your balance sheet. And do some refinancing that's gonna come because the Fed will cut rates. It's not here yet, but it will come. Now, I bring this to you because you guys are up against it and I understand and I, I feel for the officers right now, I feel for the staff, I feel for the citizens. But you guys can do it, but messaging is super, super important. We have to get out there and let people know we're gonna be okay. It's a small bump in the road. I want to congratulate you on the hire, Kyler. He is very creative and he's gonna help get this stuff done, right? You have a fantastic, uh, uh, finance director here. Who understands how to get solvency and that's the key. We have to get back to solvency and be able to pay our debts. Now, in doing this, there's some hope that's coming and this is what I wanted to share with you today. Was, we are working right now, I'm working in the city of Porterville, I'm still working with, uh, almost ten other cities right now. And it's exciting because what we're getting ready to put together is what we call a League of Charter Cities. And I want to invite you guys to look into this with us and be a partner. It is gonna replace the League of Cities or Charter Cities, and here's where it will deal, defend constitutional sovereignty. And charter cities against the state and federal, um, encroachments. Uh, advocates for repeal and amendments to laws and unjustly diminished local control. It's gonna promote, uh, policies that enhance municipal fiscal independence, zoning authority and governance rights. A lot of stuff that we're experiencing is because of the overreach by Sacramento and the excess of, uh, regulations. And we got a little pushback as a united front, arm, we need to lock arms on this. Provide legal, legislative and educational support to the members of the cities. And also unify, uh, the charter cities and collective actions to safeguard the principles of self-governance. This is very positive, this is very, uh. Creates that sense of hope because unfortunately where we are today, we have to battle this out legally. Okay, and, and, and the only way we're gonna do that is do it together. The city, um, this has been a fantastic charter city. We're up against it, but together we're gonna make it, okay, and I know you guys can make it. And I'm gonna leave my card with staff if that's okay, and if you want to reach out to regarding the League of Charter Cities, I will give you more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comments?
I see.
Um, first of all, I'd like to comment on the action item in eleven, one and twelve for tax.
That's, yeah, when we do that, you can comment on that.
Yes, thank you. Um. The thing I wanted to say, I noticed that the city staff or. The agenda always, um. Posts. The, uh, expenditure accounts, but I never see where they posted that. I just thought it'd be kind of nice to know, uh, where we're at. Um, yeah. How much money do I have? Um. On that note, I still wanted to see if the manager had a chance to look at, to review the five audits that we have. And, um, if there's any operations for the upcoming audit in June. Um. Let's see, also, uh, there wasn't a meeting for the Economic Development Committee. Uh, we haven't been able to since February, so, um, if the committee has been expanded, uh, since October. I'd appreciate receiving a formal letter, um, outlining the reasons why. Uh. Let's see.
Since, since February?
Yeah, that's what I have. Um, and then again, she would just say this is the last, last time. The public requests, written requests, the, I know, I understand that, um, we don't actually have the. Um, additional insurance endorsement that, um, on file, so, um. I, uh. I also gave us for the carnival to have insurance, the same type of insurance for the carnival that we have on our property. Uh, for a whole week and I haven't received any comment regarding. I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm a concerted citizen and I can have some experience in these matters, not just asking for this stuff, just. You know, just to be funny. Um, I just am concerned, you know, what this city may face without improper documentation. It's just a simple thing. It's not. It's a big deal. Um, hey, that's it.
Thank you. I think we're all, we're up to date, right? I'm like with everything, right? So I checked into that and we were.
So we had the.
I, because I checked out. Right, with all the insurance.
I sent a circle of what I was looking for.
So, but yeah, so, yeah. And I just keep on emailing, like, we'll all have, what does, uh, the city manager reach out?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Last word, Vince.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Dennis Stone from the Lindsay Chamber of Commerce. And then I'd also like, uh, make a comment from Dennis Stone as a resident. I'm shifting hats on you guys. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to councilmember Sanchez and councilmember Ford by his side for attending our first mixer. Uh, we had a wonderful time. We had about fifty people show up, fifteen different businesses. Uh, we had four new businesses sign up that night. And so, uh, a very bright spot in the city of Lindsay, I will tell you, is the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, you probably, probably have seen, uh, Hanford has expanded their chamber, Three Rivers has expanded their chamber. We've been in communication with both cities on how we can assist them. Biscaya has also reached out to us on doing some mixers, it's really cutting to Biscaya. And so, uh, we will continue to put the chamber on the map and assist, not only that, but really pay close attention to our businesses here in Lindsay. Uh, so thank you for, for being there. We'll continue to have them and celebrate our businesses working together downtown. Uh, shifting hats, Dennis Stone, resident. Uh, it was about a year ago that my wife stood up here and made a request to purchase a city building. Uh, we'd like to revisit that because I believe that there was some disinformation given to the councils. Uh, a request for the, the, uh, purchase of the building on Moser, it's three eighty-four, East Ramos, right around the corner. Uh, we never made the request to buy that building for a dollar. We always send up, buy that, whatever the estate value is. And so we would like to revisit the purchase of that property, uh, in, uh, efforts of bringing our business downtown. Don't know what to do from here, so I'll leave that up to you guys. I'll wait for that. But, uh, we are still very interested in that, that part.
Thank you, Dennis. I'm gonna close the public comment at this time. Do I have more? Is there any more? All right. All right, I'm gonna close the public comment. We are going to, oh, yeah, to the council reporter. So just be started from my left. I'm not even gonna start us off. Here we are. The, the page, they all need to go. Um, but I wanted to say, sure guys, I don't have any more. That was cool, those are, I feel like we would back them. I think we had this. Nobody wants to, I feel like those are future projects. All right, so we're here in the line to the, to the council board, we started out with Councilwoman Bernana.
Yeah, um, it's only me, or, and I, this was the, this is the chamber like they said, um, commuter. Um, it was well attended. I liked seeing the businesses. Uh, making those connections, networking, there was also an artist there. Um, I'm not into, you know, paintings or nothing like that, but it was interesting, um, the history on the paintings. So, and how she brought back to feeling, and that was pretty nice. Um. It was good to see everybody here, but everybody left. I was hoping you'd stay, but that's okay. Um, thank you for the rest of you for staying. Um, as far as, um. I'm gonna say the comments that were made, um, sometimes we make decisions based on information that is difficult. Um, rest assured that we do look into it, we do our homework. Um, we are concerned with, uh. With our community, you know, whatever pain they bring to us, so. We will talk about any complaints and concerns that the community can bring out and hopefully, um, they feel a little favor. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Joe?
Uh, I attended the exchange club, uh, public safety awards for, um, Officer Jeremiah Garcia and volunteer Alexis Ninos. They were the firefighter and police officer of the year. Um, that was really, really nice of it and I'll have to be a part of it. Um, they said I was the first council member to ever go to that dinner, so.
We might have. You haven't got invited.
I think everybody was invited, but, um, it was nice. Um, I did attend the soccer banquet with, um, Mayor Misty. Um, we, um, did a proclamation and gave the kids, uh, some awards. Um, I also attended, was invited to the exchange club baseball dinner that, um, they did here at the high school. Um, they're a pretty cool club and we'll be doing some more stuff with them. Um, and I just want to follow up with, uh, everyone knows that I ran with the safety, public safety is my priority. The safety of our, our citizens and our children, especially the forty, five hundred kids that we have at school. Um, so I will continue to fight for our public safety and our public officers and firefighters because. It's getting bad and I don't want it to get like other cities, so let's do something about that.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would, I would like to do the safety award, but we weren't invited. Are you getting on my?
Don't say anything like, oh.
Why, thank you. Pretty good, I like, yeah, I'm telling you.
It was, it was.
Cause I'm really good at answering emails and my calendar, uh, I see that you were there though, if you're into that. But, uh, so we sent the, we, uh, went to the soccer banquet, which is really cool. Um, it was just Adrian and I. Uh, we did the, I did the O B F kickoff on Saturday, which was amazing. I'm still like, you know, with all those girls and how amazing they are. Um, yesterday I went to the LHS football taco dinner. They're raising money for their valuing ring, so that was cool. I'm sure I'll be seeing things on the air, but, um. And then I'm looking forward to going to the senior center this Thursday with some of my learners. Um. And then the parade and all the fun activities that we're gonna have this week. I hope to see you guys all out there, so that's all my report.
Thank you. The theme of the week has been homegrown. And when a fruit or a vegetable is homegrown, it's usually more difficult. It takes persistence, it takes preparation and it's for, for the people that are patient. But the harvest is worth the reward. The queen and the attendance are a great example of talent that has been homegrown here. The council is a great example of the talent that has been from homegrown here. Kyler is homegrown adjacent, uh, in Strathmore. And so we do have very capable, individual, where concerned with our citizens, our residents and everybody that is involved in the Lindsay sphere, not just the city limits. Uh, I'm very proud of, of the accomplishments that this council has had in a short time. We are the most transparent council that I've ever been, uh, aware of and I've lived here thirty-five years. And I'm very pleased with the work and the effort that we're making towards providing the resources necessary for a safe city. We are all wanting to have more police officers or public safety officers. We all want more firefighters. If we could make it happen, we would. If we did make it happen. It would be detrimental to the rest of our departments and our cities. And right now, everybody's carrying the burden. Everybody is shouldering extra work. Not just the council, but the department heads, the staff, because of the staff chunnel. We're going back to the theme, homegrown, this council, this, this new implementation of staff that we're having is being homegrown. And the fruits of that will be sweeter than we've ever seen before. The harvest we will have, once we do our re-budgeting, once we have more revenue, once we, once we start collecting more from the, the new water rate increase. We will be able to have better streets, better, better resources for all our employees and be able to plan to hire. In, in a manner that is going to be. in a manner that is going to be equitable across all our, our departments and sustainable. What happened was, what happened, and this is why I wish they would have stayed, what happened was, the previous councils and staff decided to hire, and they, they weren't sustainable. The staff that we had was not sustainable. A lot of the staff that we hired, we hired one-time funds. And that's why I wish they would have stayed. And it's unfortunate that, that they weren't sustainable, but we, moving forward, understand that if we do create a position, it has to be sustainable. It cannot be for one year, two years, and then how are we going to fill it? Now we can't. Now we've got to leave it open. We want to be able to offer quality benefits and pay, bonuses, retention bonuses. These are all ideas that we have. We don't have the capital to offer that now, but in the future, when we harvest the hard work we are sowing now, we will be able to. This week, these past few weeks have been really, really busy. Yesterday, I attended a taco dinner for the fundraiser, the all team. I also brought my head into the political, dancing, the weekly presentation at the high school. I was able to attend the Alice by Heart Production by the Lindsay Community Theater. We have a great theater. They're having the potato bake style, supported by Virginia Lawyers, Friday Night Market on the twenty-eighth, I believe. So it's a Monday, I believe. So if you all are hungry, want some dinner on the dough, please support the theater. Alice by Heart was great. Eleven to six. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and then the day before, I also attended the coronation with Mayor Misty. And I was able to attend the serioke dinner for the owner of City delegation. They will be, the party is Friday, so we are going to have ten members representing our city that will go into owner of City as a previous delegate myself. It's a great opportunity. Owner of City is a great community. They love hosting us. They, they wish we would come more often. And, and I enjoy hosting them. I hosted the community of owner of City. It's a great program. Not every city has, city, not every city has an opportunity to send a delegation, to receive a delegation. But it's a wonderful thing that we have, and I love supporting it, and I will continue to support it. So good luck to them. Safe travels. And then I was able to drive by the cleanup. I really appreciate waste management, putting that on. We do it twice a year, I believe, so we'll probably have one in the fall again. That was, that was nice to, to the city to offer, and I saw a lot of people with full truck beds, so it was nice, nice to see, see them not having to incur the cost of going all the way down. And taking that off. I've also attended a various amount of soccer games. We, we have a great league that has garnered the registration of five hundred kids close to it. And speaking to the individual in charge, he wants to find a way to work with the city to come back. So I'm hoping that in the future, we can, we can find, find a way to entice them back and, and even can generate revenue. And so, yeah, that, that was it. I appreciate the staff. I appreciate those of you that stayed. Thank you for everybody, everybody's hard work.
Thank you. Moving on to city manager's report. Oh, you sure care?
All I wanted to say is I'm so motivated by Mr. Spogel. He speaks so eloquently, so well. I don't, I, I don't, I don't like speaking at all. I get really nervous, but he spoke so well, so I'm very, very happy that you are part of the city council and that this is not an easy job. It's not easy at all, so. I mean, I wish, you know, there's an election coming up soon, so if anybody's interested, you know, anybody needs any help, let me know because, you know, being up here, it's a good experience. It's tough. There's times where you're going to cry, there's times you're going to be mad, and there's times that you're going to be happy. But ultimately, like Spogel was saying, it's, it's very sweet at the end. It's very gratifying. So thank you. You're motivating me. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to watch the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Great to be here. Orange Blossom Week. I've got my nice orange tie on, so I'll support the citizens industry. Just a quick tidbit before I get into the report. I do have, over the summer, I was going to some old family heirlooms, and my great-grandparents attended. First, Orange Blossom Festival, and I think they're two here in town, for residents outside of the city, but still participated. So it was really cool to see some of my grandmother's notes to her mom, carrying, you know, some of the different questions. So, homegrown, deep roots here. Over the past couple of weeks, we've been really looking at budget issues, looking at audits, kind of diving into it. Talking with all departments about getting in budget requests and things looking forward to next year. The goal is for us to collectively as staff to come together, have, have an understanding of what that looks like, and then present to council via a budget workshop in May. Then followed by, you know, getting, receiving comments from council and from the public. And then we will bring it back in June for, for subsequent votes before it actually be adopted after incorporating those, those comments and feedback from council and from members of the public. So that's, that's a strong focus right now as we are in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year and fast approaching the fiscal year. In addition to that, some, some things that staff has been working on diligently in preparation for Orange Blossom Festival. City Services has done a tremendous job being out about throughout the entire city, working on the parade route, cleaning things up, working around the city hall. We've got our public safety department have been working very closely with the Orange Blossom Festival committee, ensuring that we're ready for the parade, we're ready for the carnival, coordinating with everyone, trying to make sure that everything goes smoothly throughout the week, but specifically this weekend. And so my hat's off to everyone. It's, it's been a whole team effort. Recreation has also been there, coordinating events. I know we have one of our very own, Stephanie Velazquez, in fact, is on the city that helped with my block directly involved. Was helping to provide coronation on Saturday, you know, preparing church, so. With that, I went there, yes. But yes, I was, I was present at the coronation of the ceremony and, and so, so also having to making sure that we're doing that. In addition to some of those things, just some deferred maintenance that was needed, that we were able to get done quickly. Thought it was necessary in preparation for Orange Blossom Festival activities. We repaired the plumbing here at city hall that hadn't taken place in quite some time. It was a relatively minor repair, but a repair that made the public restrooms not operable for a period of time. So that took place last week, and so they are helping the public and, and able to utilize it. So to the point of having baby steps and making sure we're getting through some of the things, those are the focal points that we're trying to through. Well, eleven, we've had good communication with the state on our grant. There's still some progress to be made on that, but did have some initial, good discussion as far as what that funding might look like. We're just still working out the timing and trying to get it sooner rather than later, and so that's, that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing effort that we're doing. I did see Mr. Warson here earlier, or he's still here, there you go. And so there's been some discussions with the hospital district about having joint meetings in the future. I've shared with Mr. Warson that it will probably not be in the near future, but, but we'll be coordinating with people's schedule and making sure we have a robust agenda where we've outlined some of the different goals and some of the outcomes that we're looking to have to ensure that, that it is a productive meeting. And so I think in, in that same line where I haven't had a great conversation with one to go by, but I think that that may also be if that's a council desire to something similar with the school district. Just knowing that in a smaller city, we have a lot of shared interests, and we want to make sure that we are partnering together wherever possible, make sure that we're all achieving the same goals. Last, well, a few other things. One, there was, as far as this, some cleanup items. There are some trainings. I know some staff mentioned to council that may need to be completed by council. And I, and I bring this up because I know I need to complete them as well, being new, so I asked whether or not we have those for council. So sexual harassment training, ethics and brown hat. So, you know, we just communicate afterwards. Some have completed various numbers of those, and others maybe one or two of those, or possibly all three. I don't need all three. So we'll work on that as far as scheduling, but special meetings, multiple individuals or what that cycle will coordinate. I know our, our attorney's law firm, they regularly do some of those trainings individually and collectively from multiple jurisdictions, so we can, we can coordinate and figure out a time to make sure that we're satisfying our legal requirements to go through the training. This week is a sound event about policy council, which is an annual conference for the eight-valued council of governments. So our representative is T C A G, so T C A G serves in that capacity with their board. And they talk about a lot of transportation issues. And Mercedes hosting it this year. And as right now, I'm planning on showing up there Thursday for the day and seeing some of the, some of the things that are going on there. And then lastly, the League of Cities has their annual spring conference, April twenty-third through twenty-fifth in Sacramento. I know it's a little last minute, but if there is any interest by any council members to attend, please let me know, and we can try and coordinate any, any travel arrangements, any registration, those type of things. Yeah, and so, and that's basically in two weeks. It's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, as far as moving that out. So we'll have a council meeting that, that Tuesday, if I remember correctly.
Next one should be the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, yeah. The following three days are that conference. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do want to add that we are writing the parade with the superintendent and the school board and city council. We're all, we're all going to get nine old fire trucks in our, our float is called Stronger Together. So that's something that we, because we are, we need to work together to make this place better. So we'll see you at the break.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to consent calendar, calendar. Reaching items approved in one motion unless an item is for discussion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed and voted upon by a separate motion. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
It was Nate.
Okay, so motion by council member Sanchez, second by Nate. Anybody for?
I'm.
I.
Against? Anybody against?
No.
Motion carries or disresue?
Now we're moving on to action items. Eleven point one, Caltrans, our congress meeting for California State Highway sixty-five, action and recognition. And this is by Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have an agreement with Caltrans updating existing agreement for Highway sixty-five. This is to approve a roundabout. In the council package, the diagram shows the realignment of sixty-five as well as one of the roundabouts. Include Oak Avenue and Solari Avenue. There's a realignment that will straighten the curve out. And so make it safer. Roundabouts typically, it slows traffic down, so it, so they are safer from that standpoint. It helps reduce vehicle emissions, and there's less idling time going through that. I know it's sometimes challenging as, as far as getting used to driving through roundabouts. The city has, has a couple already, and so, you know, hopefully it's had some piece of practice as far as how. But the idea is to move forward with it. There's also cost effective. Putting in signal lights are fairly expensive. And at the last council meeting, we had an item to support the county's efforts in placing a signal light at Screws and two fifty-six. And they were seeking federal funding to place the signal light, because they don't have the funds, because it's, they're upwards of a million dollars for a, for a new signal light. Whereas roundabout doesn't necessarily have non-world costs of replacing lights, of repairing any electrical work. We do have a representative of Caltrans who's present, and I'd ask to, to come on up and maybe share a little bit about the project. And if there's any questions, then these are my hands.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Kirk Hathaway. I am an off sheet in project management with the Lieutenant's Office in Fresno. Before I get started, just wanted to say go bearers. So, yeah, like, like Tyler had mentioned earlier, we just, we have an old state route agreement from nineteen sixty-four. And we all, it has an existing alignment, and so we're coming back now with this new proposed project. And so we want to just capture the new alignment that we, that we talked about, a homebound in the area. And now we've got a new freeway to escape. Moving along the connections. That's kind of why we're here. You can answer any questions if you may have.
Could you talk about the timeframe as far as what Caltrans is looking for construction and what that looks like?
Sure, sure, yeah. So right now, we are in the design phase. So it's the design and the right-of-way case of the project. We have our rally folks who are working on appraisals, and I've been told within the next couple of months, they should start working with property owners that are affected, letting them know just how many acreage they're all looking for in property. So that should be coming in a couple of months. Like I said, we're, we're in the midst of fine tuning the design, figuring out where things lay. That should finalize. What's, what's really kind of driving also this phase is utilities. We have utility locations, quite a few utilities. So right now, our target is about this time, maybe later spring of twenty twenty-seven, we'll be finishing up with the design and the right-of-way. And then shortly thereafter, so in that summertime of twenty seventeen, we'll start losing dirt.
You remind me, is this costing a bidding thing, or is it just?
This is a great question. It is. We are funding out the local measure. T C A G has some funds in there. And then also, we are looking at the state program, the regional improvement program. So there's state funds. And that would be utilized, but state funds, but local. Okay, local town funds.
I believe T C A G's funds aren't necessarily from the city's actual allocation. They're going to be more general from the, from the overall county.
Okay, correct. Will there be input? An input phase? I know a couple of comment phases where we, we kind of do some input for the design. So, yeah, we, so we did, during the previous days, we had the environmental things, and so we did get some input. But I, I did talk to Tyler, and we would love to come out and roll out some plans, throw out some PowerPoints, talk about design, left turns, right turns, radius. It was a thing that he wants to get back to you. But, yeah, we, we definitely would like to canal this and T C A G. Hey, don't do that, do that. Yeah, we definitely, definitely, there is this opportunity.
Sure. Yeah, I'm just curious if it's going to be the double lane with the double islands. If on each side or one, there, there, the lanes are individual, not like here where some kinds of ones.
No, and probably, but the one question I'd. The one question I didn't quite prep for, um, but, so I do know, so two lanes, you know how it's, it, uh, shrinks down to one lane right around there. So we're gonna extend that two lanes, um, through the roundabout and then a little bit on the, the backside of the roundabout. And so, uh, it should then be a two lanes and a two lane roundabout and then exit as a two.
That's so confusing, everything's on that supposed to be.
There's, there's also the option to have lanes in between, right? That's what I'm asking, uh, so maybe be included and be prepared so we can disseminate the information.
Sure, sure, yeah, we, we, we have some of those design frameworks are. That can, yeah, and, and again, it's, it's all based on, on, on like, so, um, like, yeah, we, we're welcome to. Uh, come back, we're, um, yeah, we come back and like several lots of meetings.
There's some landscaping going on there, I can see, I can see it already, the living side.
Um, we've been working with that local agencies there, we haven't known about that yet, and we can work through those, those, those missions for sure.
When breaking ground, uh, what does that look like for traffic, are you closing completely down that street? Cause it's not very, very narrow, so are you gonna be closing down or?
Probably still a little work to, to do on that, but what, some stuff that I was working with project manager before I came here, it looks like we're gonna do a lot of work. It's south, uh, sixty five, so we'll be able to do a lot of work, um, while sixty five is, is open, that's when the turn goes is open. We'll then have to, have to figure out a way to see. And we have traffic laws to be about, but right now the plan here is work, and, uh, that's, it's gonna open, no deep. I wanna say middle deep, but there may be some details in the evening, uh, and, and we, we wanna try to minimize the, the problem.
Are you taking any questions in your public?
Yes, we are, I was just waiting there.
I, I was wondering, does that mean?
Yeah, potentially some of our lanes are displayed.
Hopefully most of you know who I am and Star Wars. And I'm curious, is this plan, there was a plan that I was either going completely reroute. Highway sixty five, sixty car, basically the sidestep runs it, and just went straight into spruce, is that plan? All, also in place, or is this one taking? Uh, this one is moving forward, that plan of, of really a realignment of sixty five, um. Uh, I will say it is, it's hit some stagnant slowdown over the other. On the environmental side, um, the, the need that. Um, right now it, it is, uh, kinda taking a backseat, it doesn't.
We have any more thoughts? For eleven point one, maybe one of the others.
You, okay, go ahead.
If, you can approach the mic, please.
The, the public can hear you. Yeah, terrible.
It's poor. So, um, it's just like the, the bottle, you know, it's just right there, it was like two lanes running in one lane, it's like. I sat there for like five, ten minutes in a line of like twelve cars and it's, I'm in this highway. There wasn't even a hundred cars, and then they stop at spruce. You know, and then the light changes over on your side, and it's, so, I mean. I'm not, I thought that this, this so old would work, but it just feels like it's just that. That two lane and one lane, and then the spruce light just turns on you. We, I would hate to see that cars are just stuck in it for a bit because the light is. Maybe there needs to be some coordination and coordination for, you know, I do, I spend, maybe in the morning time. I feel so about people on highways, I don't have to do that.
I think if roundabouts were driven correctly, people would find, so it's supposed to. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, oh, well, we'll take one more plan.
My question is, like, the previous speaker. I've seen, um, big semi trucks make that turn to make the light. If there's a roundabout, what's gonna happen? You know what, they don't slow down, they just wanna make the light, that's Bruce, and it's fine. So, and this, you've seen, I've seen, there's, there's oranges all over the road, right there. I don't think it's gonna slow down the traffic, if you think that around, no, it's just gonna make people wanna go faster to make the light. You know what I'm saying, unless they're gonna do something with the light, you know, or they take it up completely because. I've seen people going on red, trying to make the light, and if you have a roundabout there. They, they're not gonna be slowing down, they could be speeding up to make the light, and when you have a roundabout. You know, it's, it's pretty cool, to me, it's too cool, you have a roundabout in that area.
So when it comes to the design stage, we need to, we need to, we open it up. And, and your concerns, and I think once we get to that stage, um, it'd be really, really hard for me to give you.
Yeah, that's true, I would, I would, my concern is I've seen so many actors, I haven't seen him, but I've seen the after effects. Yeah, get, and getting caught in the line because of that, so they're connected, and it's in that area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, um, with the, the green times or red times, I can go back. Check with our means folks, um, and just have them go back out and kinda look at those, this green time, red time, take in that time. But, yeah, this project, I just wanted to note that, you know, the, the roundabout is, is, um, at the Oak Street. It, it's not at the, the intersection, I mean, the, the light there, it's almost a mile. Yeah, yeah. We're good?
Yeah.
And thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you gotta check on, you gotta check on the lights, see if they, the maintenance of them, you know, make sure that, you know, they have, because longer times, so, that would be great. Yeah, so we do, do we have a motion?
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve.
You can say all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. So we're gonna move on right now to eleven point two, the approval of the city manager contract, and Megan, you will address a couple of things right now, so. Some changes.
Yeah, comfortable, and so this is, um, the same terms that council already approved. Uh, at the last council meeting before your session, but this is just the formal agreement for moralizing that. And so nothing was changed based on, uh, council discussion and approval. The only thing that I will note, um, tonight is that, um, after I did some, you know, further review. In compliance check, um, I determined that in order for us to be compliant with. Helpers and excluded from helpers, since this is the consulting agreement, we'll need to change the terms to six months rather than a year. Um, and so then, uh, we'll, you know, depending on the status, we'll come back in six months and. And we, we, that's, um, the contract at that time and how the board. Um, I will, um, do a check with helpers too at that point, just to make sure everything's good and make there are any issues. I'll bring it back to council, but, um, yeah, so instead of it being from. March eighteen, um, twenty twenty six, it'll be September eighteen.
Do we have any questions?
So we're gonna be in the blacks, we're having. We're not making great. Our state, what's that called, paper balls?
That is the goal.
So there's the, the changes that we just made, it was from four months to six months. We have any questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, just, just kidding, um, do I have a public comment? For eleven point two.
If you wanna approach that.
No, no, it's the same, yeah.
That's, and, yeah, the contract is still an interim contract. I agree, did you apply for position? No, there's a petition still open, we are taking our.
Alright, number one comment, do I have a motion to approve eleven point two?
I'm motion to approve eleven point two, the city manager's contract.
In favor?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Uh, I oppose.
Ask each one.
Now we're gonna move on to public hearing, um, twelve point one zoning ordinance update by Carousel.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Steve Brandt, I, uh, work with Kira at U K, and we're gonna be co-presenting, uh, this, um. Item tonight, um, excuse me, the. We're gonna be talking about updates that we're, that are being proposed to the zoning ordinance and to the subdivision ordinance. If you see your packet, you know that both of those ordinances are quite long, and so we've got a presentation to summarize the changes that we're. Putting forward, um.
Stick life.
There we go, so, the main overall goal and purpose of this is really to make it easier to construct. A variety of housing types in, in Lindsay. So, uh, the way we do that is, uh, uh, almost all of these changes have to do with housing. Um, and you, as you know, there's various types of housing, not just single family houses or multifamily houses, there's all kinds of houses for. 特殊 needs or, for speci- special, uh, types, and so, um, we're gonna be going through a lot of those tonight. Uh, the, what this does is brings the ordinance into compliance with some new state laws about housing. You know Sacramento is really pushing for more housing, uh, so this does that. It makes changes that we anticipate are gonna be required by the housing element, that process is still happening. Uh, that we're working on, and then it also makes some clarifications to subdivision map requirements, and so. That should make it easier for developers to propose subdivisions, get more housing in. And then it makes it several other minor, uh, technical clarifications. So, just wanna start by saying, here's some things that are not changing, so we're not making any changes to the zoning map. We're not making any changes to the number or the types of zones that you have in the city. So all of those zones that you're familiar with are, are still gonna be there. And we're not making any changes to standards like building setbacks or height limits, um, these are mostly changes having to do with. Where you can build housing and how, how much housing you can go. So, here's gonna go through a lot of these different types of housing and talk about the changes that are being made. And then I'm gonna come back and talk about, um, uh, what I think is the most interesting one is, is the. Accessory dwelling units and S V nine, and how that is gonna affect, um, how many houses you can actually put. On a single family lot.
Is that what we approved last council meeting?
It was the first reading.
Yes.
E D Mayor, council members. As Steve mentioned, this part could be a little dry, these are all, uh, definitions that are established by the state. For these different technical housing programs, and, uh, all these changes are in response to state laws as required. And, um, they're mostly geared towards disadvantaged groups or. For our first one. Is housing for agriculture employees, this housing is specifically for employee housing. And it is now allowed in all zones that allow single family homes, there wouldn't be a difference. Oh, and if you have any questions, um, if you'd like me to go further in depth on what that definition entails or. What types of housing, um, that would result in, feel free to ask me in the interviews.
Is, so, would this be like the woodbell labor cap or something like now cap? Yes, okay.
The next one is group care homes, these are for groups of less than six individuals and they're living together through disability assistance. So, group home care, group care homes with siblings or less are now allowed wherever single family homes and multifamily homes are allowed. And then group care homes with seven persons or more, we can still require their condition to permit for that use. Single room occupancy housing, also known as S R O's, this is where the living area and bedroom is private. And the kitchen and or bathroom can be a shared space, so a small. S R O is gonna be four units or less, and a large one is going to be five units or more. And according to state law and your new ordinance, all small S R O's are now allowed in single family and multifamily residential zones. And the large S R, S R O's are allowed in multifamily residential zones and central commercial zone with a C U P. We did also add standards for size, R P and other amenities.
Do you know if this would affect our McKinney vento kids, because they are considered McKinney vento when they are living in. One single family home but multiple families inside, is that, is that gonna change that?
Just to put it, but it's, so it's an existing facility, or these are multiple different facilities?
So right now, if there is a single family one, and we have multiple families living in there. These families qualify as homeless because they don't have a home by themselves, so this, uh, that's what I'm, I'm. Do you know what I'm, yeah, I'm sure, so guess what she's saying is like, if there's, uh, she wants to make sure that this is not, if this. If a family does it like, like this, they're not considered homeless, or they don't follow under the McKinney vento.
Let me.
You might just look into that.
I don't have to, we must look into that, yeah.
That doesn't sound the same as what, what this is, the S R O's, so an S R O, and, and I don't know that we have that many in the valley. You see it more in like San Francisco, places like that, where, where you rent, you rent a room. But your bathroom is down the hall and you share it with your, with the person who's renting the room next door. So it's kind of like a hostel, but, um, but here we call it S R O's, so we don't have a lot of those around here. And, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but these are designed for those particular purposes, whereas I think. Uh, for the council members, um, and that those are more just residential homes for, for people that are living in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our. Yeah, and S R O is usually really small, it's usually a single person living by themselves, and so they have, they have one room to themselves. But they share the restroom or the kitchen with their neighbor.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I did just find the, the state's H C D, uh, their definition for it, and it says. That it is small between two hundred and three hundred square feet, and it says these units. And it says that it is small between two hundred and three hundred square feet and it says these units provide valuable source of affordable housing for individuals and can serve as an entry point into the housing market for people previously experiencing homelessness.
Okay.
So, it sounds like they wouldn't be considered homeless anyways.
Before we move on, what what are some of the, uh, requirements for parking, not for this one, but for are they gonna be across the border of parking, uh? Like, are you gonna be required or are you gonna scale back, or are they gonna require more parking, are they gonna allow more housing? Not necessarily for this one, but if you have any, if you're, I mean, if you're.
So, in general, the state is restricting the requirements for parking, so, for example, you you wouldn't require as much parking as you did used to in the past. So I would guess in this case in particular that it would follow that trend. Manufactured housing is where the the dwelling is constructed off-site and then brought to the site for final assembly. And this is now allowed wherever single-family housing is allowed. There are standards for construction materials and utility hookups, so it does have to be, for example, it does have to be on a permanent foundation, it does have to, and to the city water and sewer. So it would still look like in your, um, traditional, you know, built home, but it would be with an effect which is. Emergency shelters are temporary housing for up to six months with supportive services provided. And they are now allowed in the neighborhood commercial zone. And it now allows, the code now allows residents to bring partners and guests into store personal items through reuse barriers. Low barrier navigation centers are temporary housing that provides help with quickly obtaining permanent housing. And these are now allowed in the neighborhood commercial and mixed-use zones. Supportive housing is where residents receive some type of medical or mental care or counseling. And supportive housing is now allowed in all single-family and multifamily residential zones.
Do you have to tell people that these people live in their neighborhood, or these kind of houses are in their neighborhood?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, you you right, yeah, yeah, okay, I remember.
Yeah, a lot of the a lot of the cutoff is six or less, so six or less is whereas it's allowed by right and there's no notification, there are some uses, I I think we'll come across a couple of if we haven't already, where seven is the threshold. And that's where, so for instance, if it required a C V, then it would require noticing to the three hundred square meters. Reasonable accommodation is defined, um, uh, by federal law to avoid barriers to housing for persons with disabilities. And the code was updated to make it easier for individuals and groups to request a reasonable accommodation. Other zoning ordinance updates that we included are an update to the current department and positionings, so the city has a city services department and a city services director. And the current code didn't, um, use the correct names for those departments and directors, director. Um, also, the name of one family residential zone was changed, single-family residential zone. And we have changed the site plan review process to be completed at the staff level rather than coming to city council. This is consistent with every other city that I've worked in, and it was also recommended by HCD as a barrier to housing, so, um, that was a recommendation that we have, that we make that change.
Okay, so I'll just talk about accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So these are, a lot of these are to make, uh, your ordinance in conformance with a lot of new state laws that were passed in the last few years. There's really been a push in Sacramento to encourage ADUs and JADUs, so, um, I'll try to go through the the differences between them and then also talk about where you can have them and how many you can have, so uh, an ADU can either be attached to the existing main home or detached as a separate, um, uh, dwelling. The, in the bottom, you can see there's a detached ADU on the, on the left, in the middle is the junior ADU or the day you the difference between the regular and the junior is is about size, so the junior is usually smaller and it's usually attached to the main house. Um, and then a larger attached ADU is on the right. So, these, uh, uh, dwelling units are now allowed wherever single-family and multifamily homes are allowed, so ADU zones that allow single-family and multifamily. They're also allowed in commercial zones if they're built above the ground floor, like over a commercial, so uh, we don't usually see that around here, but but it would be allowed if somebody wanted to do it. Uh, they can be built, if if they're part of the main dwelling unit, they can be built into an attic, part of the basement. They can be a garage conversion if the parking is replaced on the site. Um, and they could also be manufactured homes, which is the old old homes.
Can you stand on the garage having to replace the parking, so?
So, so garage, garage obviously provides parking on onsite. The, the code says that you can convert that garage into livable space, a whole separate living unit. But you need to still have onsite parking to replace it, so, um, most of the time that's not a difficulty because a lot of homes are built with the with the longer driveways. And so the driveway area counts as as parking in front of the, of what used to be the garage. So, um, some, some, uh, help in order to encourage more ADUs on sites is the ADUs and the JADUs do not need to comply with maximum lot coverage, um, uh, that that's a standard that's that's in our zoning ordinance. The side and the rear yard, uh, minimum setbacks, uh, to the fence, uh, can only have to be four feet. Um, the maximum height would be sixteen feet unless the unit is attached to the main home or it's built over a garage. In that case, it could be thirty, thirty-five feet. So these are, um, expanding more than what we had before, so that's to make it easier to design something that will fit onto people's lots. Because a lot of these are built in a, on a lot that already has a single-family home on it. And so you're trying to squeeze in, squeeze it in. Um, and then you mentioned parking before, additional onsite parking is only required or onsite parking is only required when the on-street parking is not available. So if the, if the, let's say for whatever reason, the, um, it's red curved in front of the house, well then we would require that they provide parking onsite. So how many can you have? So every lot could have one ADU and one, uh, JADU. The ADUs can be up to twelve hundred square feet and the JADUs can be up to five hundred square feet. Um, and they must you can have one of each.
I know.
Wait, if you, if you wait, the, for next few slides, your mouth will be white. Um, so, they must appear to be smaller than the main dwelling unit. And they must obviously meet applicable building codes, they have to be connected to city water and sewer and to other, um, utilities, gas and and available electricity. And then the other thing, which I don't, I have on the slide, is, you know, there used to be requirements in some cities that you had to be related to to live in the J U, none of that, it was gone, so you can you can rent it out to whoever, you can actually, if you're a property owner, you can even rent out the main house and the ADU to two different families. Um, so now we come to SB nine, which ties into the ADUs, and this is kind of, this is really, I call it a zoning override because it's the state saying, I don't care what you have to say about single-family zones, this is what everybody's gonna do now, so, um, and I'll emphasize that everything in here does not require council approval, it has to be handled at staff level, so this is basically people have the right to do this there. So dwelling, first of all, it's obviously dwellings must be used for residential purposes, so you can't say that you're building an ADU and turn it into a small business or something like that. Um, so, part of SB nine is talking about urban lot splits, so this is a new law that says that people that have a single-family lot can split it into two lots and sell those separately. And they don't have to comply with our minimum lot size standards as long as, um, and as long as they're doing it to build another house on on the second lot, so, um, this, the lot only has to be twelve hundred square feet, which is really small. Um, a lot of them probably won't be that small because they won't be able to fit a house on something that small, if there was something small they could. Um, we did make sure to put in place that all the typical surveys standards are met so that it's easy to make sure letting those exactly where their property plans are. Um, and again, the dwelling units can only be used for residential purposes, and once you do this, you can't divide. So, so if you have a, if, this is a benefit, if if you've got a lot, let's say that's like a maybe a six thousand square foot lot and you've got a house on it, you have a front yard and a backyard, there's no problem with that. You with that, but if you have a larger lot, um, there's a lot of things that you do now that you weren't gonna be able to do before. Um, in terms of splitting, if if you want to add more housing onto that lot.
But they still have to get a survey and all that stuff, right?
You still have to go through the survey process, you still have to get building permits, but, um, but we can't say no, we can't do that.
Do they get reassessed again, the?
Yeah.
I feel that would.
So, yeah, they'll bring in more property tax, um. So here's some examples of what you can do. So and then the other thing is, now with the SB nine, even though we're calling it a single-family zone, you can have two homes on the lot. So really, you can have four homes because you can have two homes, one ADU and one JADU. If you can actually fit it on the lot. So these are just different examples, so the one on the left is two single-family dwellings and one detached ADU. The middle one is a duplex and one detached ADU. The third one is two single-family dwellings, JADU detached, the first one, fourth one is a duplex two detached ADUs in the backyard. So all of these scenarios would now be allowed in the single-family.
Do you still have a B five?
Four feet.
Four feet.
Four feet. Inside of the roof. Your pet's your neighbor, yeah.
Very story, yeah.
Which, which in my mind is is why it's really important to have all those survey standards, because now you're talking about, you know, really close, you don't wanna have a mistake and build your own in the wrong place. Um, so here's an example where, or these are examples where you're, where you do, you're taking advantage of that lot split provision. So you could build two homes and then split in half and you could sell those both separate. You could, um, do a flat lot in the back and have two homes and then each of them have or you could have two duplexes, which is four units. Um, and then you can have duplex in the front and two homes in the back and split those off, and then you could choose to keep them or sell them separate. So, all kinds of options. Yeah, all kinds of options.
Every time it goes us, like, uh, uphill, uphill, EDU, is there a reassessment?
I believe so, yes. So here's an example lot from Lindsay, that's this, it's a fairly large lot, uh, has a house on it. Shows how, see, you can fit up to four units, you could have a second single-family house in the back, you can have an ADU or. So so, um, some other, this, I'm getting close to the end, some other subdivision ordinance updates, um, we're gonna require that both the front yard and the backyard be landscaped for new, uh, subdivisions. Um, and the M W O standards, uh, if you know what that is, that's, it stands for the Model Water Efficiency, um, uh, ordinance, and so that's basically designing, uh, yards for low irrigation, slow, low water. Um, uh, we're going to require that new tentative map applications require a water well serp letter. Uh, that's why we make sure that that, um, we know before we approve a new neighborhood that we're able to serve it with water. Um, we're gonna clarify some actions that are not subject to the subdivision ordinance, that's kind of some technical cleanup. And then some other, uh, technical requirements about what should be drawn on a subdivision map or a parcel map or a adjustment. And then also clarifying the requirements for when you, when a developer needs to underground uh, overhead utility lines that are on this property. So those are some, some technical things. Um, at your last meeting, you approved the mitigated negative declaration, uh, so the sequel part is done. And so our recommendation is to approve both of these changes by the adoption of the ordinance that's in your package. So, uh, if you have any more questions, we're happy to answer them or go back to a different slide. Uh, I wanna make sure you you just have a good understanding of of what these changes are gonna be like, um. If you're, if you're pro-housing, this is very positive. Um, if you're, if you're a nippy person that doesn't want your neighbor to build more housing in their backyard, this is not it. But, but it's kind of like, we don't have a choice because on a lot of these, um, the state is saying all cities have to make these changes, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm curious about, uh, backyard landscaping, we have to require that, or, I'm just
I'm not sure where that came. That was just for the subdivision portion, right, sort of, part of the subdivision.
Right, so this would be a new subdivision, no new single-family housing eventually, um. So, in most cities, in most cases, only this, the front yard, and according to the state's M W O law, maybe the front yard has to be um, Lindsay to that standard. But in Lindsay, there are some significant wire issues that are unique to Lindsay, and so in a, in an effort to reduce the amount of irrigation necessary for new single-family lots, that requirement was made by the city services.
It would be, I'm just, um, trying to imagine they have to landscape this or draw water, but I don't know where I see that. Or how about?
The, uh, search, I believe, would be, maybe in the, is it twenty-five percent? Okay, so twenty-five percent of the lot area would be allowed. Yeah, so typically, if you've seen new subdivisions, they threw a lot of mulch with hedges or um, ornamental plants, and then the other option is artificial. Or hard scape.
Any other questions? So even if the state's adopting it and we have to follow the rules, like, do we really have a choice?
You know?
Not really.
Not really.
Not really.
Yeah, okay.
You have to tell us on that backyard text, but that that's one part of it.
Yeah, we have to do the backyard.
Would it make it more difficult for our homes to be built?
No, because not that it'd be like building my own house, but at another dwelling in the back. They, for the new subdivision, they can also do that, correct?
Yeah. I guess the way I'd answer your question is. A lot of people that don't have to do the backyard right away, they'll maybe wait here and then they'll do it themselves. And so by having the home, home builder do it, you're, it's gonna get um. Tied into your mortgage. So it might make your mortgage a little tiny bit higher because now your house is probably gonna sell for a little bit higher price. But you won't have that expense, you know, a year later. So apples, oranges.
And without it, it might be difficult for the city to issue well service. So if you're calculating how much this. Water use is gonna be demanded, this uh, in that area.
And we've seen that happen in other cities, Clovis, um, where, where people just build. Amazingly water intensive backyards as a way of getting around the state standards. Cause the, cause the state standards really only apply to the front yard. Um, unless we adopt something that says they apply to the backyard as well.
So something unique, or something unique, this is something unique to our.
This is, this is actually unique.
Cause I remember first the backyard being.
Yeah.
Okay.
You good? Maybe you have a public comments or twelve point one?
You may.
No?
I got a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can just approach the mic.
Good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. I guess my concern is, when you said the word unique, we see it every day here. And what I do, we got a lot of houses already in the alleys. The problem I'm seeing is. We're using alleys like streets and we're not set up that for that. Now you have to create more revenue, find a way to turn these alleys that are dirt into streets. Or maintenance. But that's just an observation, like I said, where are we dealing with, right?
Thank you.
Thank you for that, yeah.
Oh, and then you add all the cars that are parked in the alley and not being able to get a fire truck either. That's an issue we already have. But I mean, if they have to set up some kind of parking, it's gonna have to be either in the front or on the street that they can't park in, yeah. But we already have a lot of technical, they're not permitted.
So either way, if we were, the state's already bringing this up.
I'll, I'll make another comment, but this is, it's not in state law or required. We have to adopt something along the ones that the state requires. I mean, that's my thought process, that's what I do, that's what I do.
Yeah.
Um, but the other part is it's how you administer it. If you want this, this town to look like some parts of Hawaii. Great. And all these little shoebox houses or San Paulo, that's up to you guys, is administer. Shoeboxes that the state requires. It's just how you administer it, how you, how you allow.
I love the honor.
I love it. Some parts of it I didn't want.
And, thank you for that.
Anyone have a public comment? No, okay. So let's uh, take a, grab a note and go through, I'll put one.
This, we do need the.
Oh, right.
Approve ordinance six one six, second.
Bring the second part of it. But we, okay, one more thing, sorry. We'll have stipulations as we say, right? I remember.
I mean, I mean, they have to get permits to have.
Yeah.
So it's not a free for all, whatever you want. Still have to have a high standard as far as what these new units are required.
Okay, what about the ones that are existing? Alright.
Okay, so moving on, twelve point one, we don't lose. Council, then Soria.
Second.
Yeah, do you have a second?
I'll say. I'll pose. Eyes.
Eyes.
Eyes. Pose. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Ordinance four.
Four.
Four zero.
Okay, so now moving on to uh, eleven point one recreation streams. Your time is speaking on that. Because you're there. Go on, basically, the best for last, but somebody told me that I talked too much, they put me last. Thank you. Alright, so I'll be discussing the. Alright, so I'm the red guy, so we're gonna have some fun. So I'll be doing the recreation wellness in the park center, UBS, um. Uh, UBS, yeah, UBS for spring and summer. Um, I'll try to do as fast and painless as possible. So next week, um, we're trying to do, we're doing beginners, uh, current free line dance at Wellness Center. Uh, the big hits, um, we're gonna try to uh, we're gonna try to contract, um, the instructor in. Do weekly or monthly classes. Um, right now, we currently have twenty four signed up. Um. So we're gonna get there to thirty, our thirties are old. Um, so we're excited about that. So it's next. Uh, Thursday, six to eight P M. And it's a beginners line dance. So if you don't know too much, um. The instructor's really good. He'll work with everyone, take your time. Uh, so if you're interested, do it now. We will fill up. And then this Saturday, um, we'll have our, our National Public Health Week. Uh, we'll be hosting a health fair on Saturdays or this Saturday already as well. Um, very large festival. So we kind of took advantage and kick you back on, on the that festival. Uh, we're gonna have two doors rolled up on both sides, uh, through a flow through the park, through the Wellness Center, uh, whole deck and out to the skate park. Uh, they are gonna bring a vaccine trailer, mobile trailer. Um, so, um, in the, I won't get there. Blue shot, um, they can do it that Saturday. Uh, so it'll be eleven to two, it'll be free health fair. I'm gonna say we'll take you back to primaries on the uh, OVA festival. The pool and coffee open. We'll have a lifeguard there, just in case somebody falls in, but the pool will not be open. We don't have all our lifeguards on Saturday. Um, this reminder, every first Friday, we host a coffee talk at the Wellness Center. Um, from seven AM to eight thirty AM. Um, usually we have a good turnout, staff, public, from the public. Uh, free coffee and gentlemen, so if you're interested out there on YouTube, come on down. Also, we have our Lindsay campout, uh, annual campout, a girl or council member, Dave is on that committee. Um, this year, we're approaching up to have Rotary sponsored a whole event. They were able to, you know, branch. Through the California Health Lab, um, undergrad. So they're gonna be paying for tents, uh, air mattress, I believe. All the food, um, pretty much everything free for the family for the first thirty. Uh, if we get more, we, we're gonna hit, try to hit forty. Uh, so we'll have games, uh, food, music, uh, bonfire. We have the school involved, school district involved, uh, formers. We'll be doing hot dogs, uh, coffee from Starbucks, um, just everybody involved.
Library.
Library, um, association, so, um, a great time. It'll be Friday, the ninth, until about lunchtime on the ten. Uh, if you don't wanna camp out, you can fine come by and check it out. You want to go over to the lobby. Um, somebody asked if they're gonna bring their RV into the no, the campout. So. I'm glad I found you guys, um, Spotify, uh, two years ago, we, last time we had it, um, I attended, I spent the night, but I attended. And it was a good turnout. We did some slimes, um, reading by the uh, fire with the library. Uh, it was a good time. We had yoga, uh, I think night time, sleepy yoga and early morning yoga. Uh, so it was a good time. Um, block party, so this is something new that we're trying out. We received the same grads. Uh, that Rotary did through the California Lab, Walkout Club. Uh, for our block party, we're gonna be on Westwood Avenue. Between uh, Palm Terrace and the markets. Uh, we're in a block out full section. Uh, we're gonna have bounce house, games, um. Food, we have public safety, they're gonna be having our hot dogs. Uh, we're gonna cook them at Wellness Center, bring them out, ice chests, just like we do for the fall festival or the harvest festival. Um, and then at night, we'll be showing the movie. And that's a free community event. Um. And we just thought that was probably the best area in the whole city to do a block party. Um, and hopefully next year, if we do, uh, another one, we'll. Make a different location or if we do have, uh, modelable competed, we might do something down there. So, um, yeah. Not gonna be on May fifteenth, Thursday. Do you propose a roundabout? No, it'll be, it'll be a, a part of the section where it will, um, block up any driveways. It'll be right and then grab that in the middle. So that way, we don't block anybody, don't try to get to their part. So, uh, we have the, or Marshall has the barricades, orange, orange like roadblocks. That we're gonna be using on the block out full size, maybe save. Um. And we're gonna have a bunch of information booths. So if anybody's interested in coming out and having a booth, just let me know and I'll send you the form. So it's all free of charge, which can be. And then our annual uh, salute to service, that will be on May twenty fourth. Um, at Wellness Center, I just ordered the shirts today. So the first fifty uh, participants will get a free shirt. Um, this program is funded through the setup program, uh, Summer Night Lights. So each program that we do, um, they, uh. Write us a check for a thousand dollars. So we'll give four events, but we're gonna be receiving four thousand dollars to cover, uh. Uh, the new events this summer. So you'll see, this is the first one we're doing. Um, and it's a free fun run and walk. Um, a lot of fun. So you get a free t-shirt, we'll have bananas, oranges, mineral bars at the end of the race of water. And this one usually, um, fills up pretty quick. We need to get about a hundred people at stake park.
What time is that?
Uh, eight thirty. And we'll start the race at, or the fun racing block at night. And then to aquatics, um, this season, we're gonna try something new. We're gonna have the pool only open during Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Uh, past couple of years, Tuesday through Thursday's been extremely slow. Uh, we're spending more time and money on staff. We get maybe twenty people, maybe today. Uh, but Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, that's where we get a large amount of people. Um, usually at least a hundred people those days and times. So we're only gonna be open to probably for three days. So Friday, six thirty P M, eight thirty P M. Saturday, one P M to four P M. And then we'll open up at six thirty to eight thirty and then Sunday, one to four. And then it's two dollars per person. So the first day will be June thirteenth. And the last day will be August third, right before they go back to school. And so lessons, um, same thing, we cut a little bit back. We do have a lot of programs at the school, we, uh, we like to do for. So we have the SARS program, that's a school program. They're gonna be doing, um, three weeks of school lessons. Where they pay us to have our chapter, give the students free for lessons, uh, for three weeks. And then before that, we'll have the P D class, unit class. We'll be out at our pool for about two weeks for the P D course. Um, and then after that, we'll have our schools in July. And we usually fill up pretty quick. Uh, we try to act timely, but we wave. Um, or we just kind of urge them to sign up for a different class if they're, um, if it's a stronger swimmer. Uh, but we try not to turn everybody, but we do fill up pretty good. And then another program, the setup, uh, grant that we received, a family dance party, uh, not sure it was a lot of fun. We had, um. Black lights, light drop a room, we had DJ, we had con candy, we had a face painter, uh, food, games, we gave out these. Uh, foam glow sticks, um, and it's free to anybody. So, um. Last year was a great time. This year it's gonna be June twenty seventh from six P M to nine P M. So if anybody's interested, just come on by, you don't need to sign up. Just show up and have your time. And then losing the park, this year will be showing, um. The dog man, um, on July eleventh, um, with a free event, removing, this year we're gonna be serving food and having games before the movie. Usually just show the movie and that's it. Um, since we received this grant, we're gonna probably do hamburgers instead of hot dogs. They're gonna be hot dogged out. So, um, so we're gonna do hamburgers this time and unwrap them and then have them out at the park. We'll have games out there, um, by a bounce house. Uh, and the grant will pay for the movie license. You use the movie license with about four hundred dollars. Um, so that kind of saves us money in the budget. Uh, so yeah, we'll be out there July eleventh at City Park. And then we'll have a diving theater, same thing, separate program. With this, um, usually in the past, we've charged three dollars per person. Um, this year we free, thanks to the setup program. That will encourage us for everybody to come in. Uh, same thing, we'll have games, free food. Actually, we did some, um, hotter pops. During the movie also, um, and they can swim and watch the movie at the same time. And then, uh, partnership we have with Public Safety, uh, that's not out, will be Tuesday, August fifth. At the Wellness Center, that's another free event, pretty slow day. Uh, Public Safety, they do the top offs, one here, the hamburgers. Um, maybe if you have a bunch of information booths out there, I usually try to help them out, get those booths to show up and then they'll handle the cooking. Make sure we save, uh, a lot of fun. And it's for. And as a reminder, we do have memberships still at the Wellness Center. Um, our numbers have grown. We've seen a lot of new faces daily. Uh, that's a good thing. Um, usually by midday, it's empty. It hasn't been for a while. That's a good sign. Uh, a lot of younger adults are signing up. Um, we do have, um, you know, silver sneakers. Where the insurance will be for their membership. Uh, we're working on with a new program. Uh, hopefully get them on board and help other seniors and other healthcare providers to pay for their memberships and hopefully grow our, um, numbers. And then I'm working with a clinic or a german, he has a new program. I have to think of the top of my head, but, um, he's hoping that these listening programs, the clientele will be for the, uh, go Lindsay. Where they can go to McDermott and Wellness Center. So it'll benefit us. That will create at least twenty or ninety percent, um, on those memberships monthly. So, um, we're excited about that. But we do have members to sell, low, very low cost memberships that includes the gym, the pool and our classes. So, um, if we have a good turnout for those, uh, line dancing classes, we can add that to the list and then hopefully grow our membership. So. And working with, yes, working with, uh. Healthy Lindsay, um, providing some healthy, um, lectures at the Wellness Center. Uh, they'll be starting up in a couple of weeks. Every Friday, they're gonna be doing some type of health lecture. Uh, right after our chair exercise class. We hope those members stay and sit around for the lecture. So. Uh, we're working, working in more healthy activities, healthy lectures at Wellness Center. Uh, Hopey T's still there, Obby. Um, they're reorganizing their, um, I guess their company. So, um. Hopefully they'll be back soon. So they're still paying us, so that's a good sign, but they're not in the city. And that's all I have. Just council, have any questions?
Can we provide these in Spanish?
Yeah, so they're in Spanish. I don't have the Spanish here. Uh, I, today I've been working on getting all these on our website today. Um, so if you go to the website, the first one is in English, provided or need, they can download each file, English or Spanish, um. At any time. So both of them are in Spanish online.
So I was told that a couple of new members, that they like that it's very.
Remember, yeah.
That is very quiet, not, or, you know, something that, but I think, I think if they're, that's why we're giving them.
And then it's clean.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
All the machines.
Yes, that's what we're doing, same thing. We do have a contractor comes early. Yes, that's where we're in the same thing, we do have a contractor comes early, uh check on machines, broken, any kind of certain nature issue will come out, of course it costs, but um we're pretty on top of it, they're throughout California. Um so they're pretty efficient, I mean, I'm always making sure, uh you know, we proud ourselves on being clean. Um like you said, a lot of people said quiet, it's not like other gyms in the city where it's like, people just slamming weights and kind of be tough, so the same.
Hey.
I'm worked out. Yeah, it's running, so guys to run, uh once the season, uh once it gets warmer, we turn off the water or the heater. Um we're hoping to replace it in the new natural year. Um but it is running right now, we flushed it for a couple of days, Angel did, we got it running, uh update, I know you asked about the mic. I worked on it today, and kind of worked on it for a while, I got, so we we had issues with the speakers, only two are now forward, I got that working and the mic works, but only in front of the uh lifeguard room, you can't walk out anywhere, so I got that going today, so we utilize that for quickly, yes. Progresses.
Cool.
Thank you, my man.
Thank you, thank you.
Um request for future items, there is a request for future items. Um so Ryan, I'm talking to you um on behalf of the school district about the lines, the the yellow um loading zone on Sierra View and Parkside, and then the red um hill parking lines that they wanna or they wanna paint the curb over at Denver and Harvard, um.
So the issue with a lot of these is the state law, so that expanded regarding, you know, how much curb it has to be. It, we really need to do a parking study, and it's, we would have to basically find the money for that, because we we need basically how that's gonna impact all the housing, and we would have to do a complete study in all these locations, we've got with with all the schools and all of the you know, the inflows and the outflows, um that's something that we would really have to work with the city manager and and determine where we can find the money for that kind of parking study to come in and present a report to council on, this is what we want.
You should ask them about Big Bird.
Well, I I think it's something that that they're you know, you could partner up with them, and with the school district, meet with them, because we're having issues, especially with the bus. Um not being able to make the turn to use the new bus lane at Rayon Elementary, so that's why, it was brought up to me today, so.
Yeah, I think we could probably get an estimate on what it would, what it would be, and then we could kind of had a better idea, see if the school district, um when I looked them up before, it really kind of depends on, again, the scope, but it could be ten fifteen thousand dollars for a, for parking study for that.
So the new law passed about the crosswalk and not parking so close to the stop sign because of it causing a increasing, you know, the view, is that, can I, can those curbs be painted? Because it's the law, or if, because people are not aware that they can't park that close to the stop sign anymore, or the crosswalk?
So I think, I mean, that's something we could work with the city manager on and really kind of determine where we would source the funds for for doing all of that.
Yeah, we'll we'll work on it, we'll figure it out, uh for listeners, and see about, so we can do something.
Any view, any other have a question?
Yes, we have our our council report, we have a comment, is that something that we can uh I've noticed, I haven't been on council, I haven't, I've noticed people come in droves and then leave, which is understandable, usually you're wrong. Really nice, really nice to have an opportunity to to know that you come before you before you leave.
Yeah, absolutely, this is, this is your council's agenda, it's part of how it, how it reads, how it flows. Um there's nothing set in stone um outside of the legal requirements, but that that's, I see direction from the council, that's uh something that if consensus is interested in moving that to the front, um councils to comment, and we can, we can definitely move that.
Would you like to move it like after the call?
Yes, I I, there ha- there there happens to be a few times when we fired hire someone at an event like yours, uh and we did a good turnout, and it would be nice if we could speak to them before they go to the conference, which as soon as they get a public comment, they'll join us for for everybody, today's a perfect example, and I'm guilty of giving them a good side, and so I restarting as a listener, and either they're relieved, so I'm like, how do we, how do we retain them? Just so we can deliver a message to them uh before they.
No, I like it.
I'm saying head not, so yeah, we'll we'll take that action and we'll um for subsequent meeting and follow.
Anything else?
I I get what you're saying, and I understand, um ultimately, you can't hold a hostage, but I do get, I do get what you're saying. Everybody, a lot of everybody goes on the agenda back to it. Um if they wish to stay, um they can stay and listen, and if they don't want to, they don't have to. But um you'd like to do a little bit of support on our end, you know, or up there, but again, I mean I mean, I'm for it, I mean, either way, if it's at the beginning or at the end.
I think, yeah, absolutely, I just think that it would be, it would be an opportunity for them to hear our essence before they leave, but it's, it it's imperative that that they understand that we're not, we're not against hearing the now, we're not against uh then giving us input, but we also like for that, so it's like, you are working on us, it's a, it would be nice. When we do have a large group, it doesn't happen all the time, but there is, there is a moment where we do have. And and then it usually tends to more people online, and it's nice to go over to Mars, where it's thirty years on.
Well, well, and well.
Thank you. Good to go, alright, this meeting is adjourned.
So um and so, you guys know, you know, this one, um in in May, if it's really possible, I don't know.
So, or in the next year for May, um it is a proxy awareness month, my niece has an autopsy. Now I was curious if we could uh make her permission, uh to bring awareness to a boss here. Some of our.
Being good senses, then yes, then you will.
I have a production mission right now, already, very specific to the city of Rins and the Dukes, and it won't be anywhere, it's just this thing of and not.
Okay, so if we're going May, next week, the national, um. May fifteenth is um National Autism Awareness Day, so um there's a lot of things that we can recognize, and I wish we could just recognize all of them, because this month is autism awareness and child abuse and domestic violence, all the things, yeah, but um, I mean, I think you just don't want to. I mean, does it have to be a proclamation, we should, we recognize it, we say something about it, you know?
It's really up to your discretion, so if we wanna, if there's a lot of things that um the council is interested in participating, and showing support and showing the community that they're behind, maybe that's something that we as staff, look at different options, and maybe some require a proclamation. Maybe there's other certificates, or there's just acknowledgement, so we can, we can discuss with staff, and then see what, and then you guys can choose as far as what you think is best, depending on your.
Okay, sounds great. Everybody have a good evening, this meeting is adjourned.